First on the agenda tonight is the approval of claims fourteen four twenty through fourteen six eighteen. Totally one point two six three million. Questions or comments, critiques on the claims for Mr. Vandermees? Is there a motion to approve those claims?
So moved.
Motion made by Jenny?
Second.
Second by Rick. All in favor of approving those claims, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries seven to zero. Payrolls. Any questions or comments on the payrolls? Is there a motion to approve the payrolls?
So moved.
Motion made by Stacy?
Second.
Second by Tom. All in favor of approving the payrolls as given, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries seven to zero. Funds report.
Alright, this month the general fund, or at the end of last month, uh, the general fund we had, uh, receipts of one million, eleven thousand five hundred twenty dollars and forty-seven cents and expenses of one million forty-three thousand three hundred fifty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. Uh, which left our cash balance in the general fund at three hundred four thousand five hundred sixty-three dollars and fifty cents. Debt service, uh, we had receipts of eight thousand forty-nine dollars and ninety cents. Expenses of two hundred fifty dollars, left us with a balance of two million two hundred eighty-five thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars and forty-nine cents. Capital projects fund, uh, receipts were thirty-one thousand two hundred eighty-six dollars and twenty-three cents. Our expenses were seventy-two thousand four hundred and three dollars and ninety-three cents. Which left us with a balance of eight hundred forty-one thousand eighty-one dollars and sixty-two cents. Transportation fund, receipts of two thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. Our expenses were fifty-nine thousand three hundred eleven dollars and seventy-five cents. Which left our, left our balance at nine hundred and thirty-two thousand two hundred seventeen dollars and ten cents. And the bus replacement fund, uh, receipts of six hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-four cents. Expenses of two hundred and ten thousand two hundred thirty-four dollars. Just left our cash, leaves our cash balance at sixty-four thousand one hundred forty dollars and sixty-three cents.
Any question for Todd on the funds report? Funds report? That cases our motion to approve the funds report.
Second.
Motion made by Rick?
Second.
Second by Sandy. All in favor of approving the funds report, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries seven to zero. Release of the teacher appreciation grants.
So, um, the state each year around about this time will release the teacher appreciation grant money. We refer to it as the tag grant money, um, as a short and the acronym. The state puts many stipulations on that. Some of the easiest to explain is that there has to be a twenty-five percent differential between what you give highly effective teachers and effective teachers. Um, teachers who have retired or resigned or not eligible for that. Teachers who were not in the district last year are not eligible for that. And then there are other criteria that, that I can go through because there's always a lot of criteria around that. Um, the money we received from the state this year was nearly three thousand less than we received last year, so that impacted the overall numbers. But right now, the differential would be highly effective, receiving four hundred and twenty dollars and fifteen cents. Effective teachers receiving three hundred and thirty-six dollars and twelve cents. And our desire is to, we already have a policy in place allowing that money to return to the teachers. It's, as it's, uh, anticipated to do so with that twenty-five percent differential. And we would like permission to go ahead and release those funds. They were in our district last week. Uh, you're supposed to return those within ten days. So we, we would release them this Friday on that pay period.
Any questions for Mrs. Vance about the tag grant monies? That cases our motion to release the tag grant monies.
So moved.
Motion made by Sandy?
Well, so yeah, so then outside of the tag grant, in the past, I've respectfully asked for the administrative team to get the same based on their evaluations. Um, that there would be six of those, um, with the total with, um, all of the extras, the TRF retirement, those types of things would cost the district less than thirty-one hundred dollars.
Did you include yourself in that?
No, I did not.
Oh, no, you did not. Historically, we do this for administrators just like we do teachers, even though it comes out of our operating fund. Historically, every time you handle it yourself and put yourself in it, and historically, I always ask you if you do, and historically, you always say no.
Correct.
If we were to treat you just like we did our other administrators, would it be, well, obviously, it would decrease our costs. What would it be there?
Less than thirty-six hundred.
And that is part of this grant monies, correct? It's not part of this grant monies, but as far as this motion goes to approve, that would approve the administrators getting that tag money as well, correct? In that case, I'm gonna ask for a motion, or we apply for, or we ask for a motion for the release of the tag monies, including administrators and Mrs. Vance. You guys would admit that motion, or?
With the administrative team coming out of general funds, not out of the tag grant funds.
Correct. That all goes to teachers.
Correct. Can I just?
If that's what you want, maybe you don't want administrators or Mrs., but that's fine. You, you make the motion. I'm asking for another motion.
Okay, I will make a motion if we release this, including.
And all the administrators? Second. My preferred motion made by Sandy, seconded by Steve. All in favor of approving the release of the tag grant monies and administrators and Mrs. Vance coming out of general fund, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries seven to zero.
On behalf of the team.
On behalf of the board, thank the team and the teachers for what they do. Resolution, resolution to establish the education and operations funds for January first, two thousand nineteen.
And I think that Julie, did you, uh, new copies off based on some typos that were caught?
I replaced them all, though.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And I just need to read education fund established under IC twenty forty-two-two and operations fund established under twenty forty-two-two. So this is under consideration, resolution to establish the education and operations fund for January first, two thousand nineteen. This would be the education fund established under IC twenty dash forty dash two dash two. The Board of Education hereby establishes the education fund. It will be used for the payment of expenses that are allocated to student instruction and learning under Indiana Code twenty dash forty-two point five. Indiana Code twenty dash forty dash eighteen dash one. Distributions or tuition support shall be received in the education fund. The education fund shall be used only for expenses allocated to student instruction and learning under Indiana, Indiana Code twenty dash forty-two point five. The fund may not be used to pay directly any expenses that are not allocated to student instruction and learning under Indiana Code twenty dash forty-two point five, where expenses permitted to be paid from the school corporation's operations fund. On January first, two thousand nineteen, the balance in the school corporation's general fund shall be transferred to the education fund. Operations fund established under Indiana Code twenty dash forty dash two dash two. The Board of Education hereby creates an operations fund to be used by the school corporation after December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. Generally used to pay non-academic expenses and consolidates the following funds and levies. Transportation, bus replacement, capital projects, art association, historical society, public playground, and racial balance. The Board of Education directs that the operation fund be established effective on January first, two thousand nineteen, and all applicable dollars be transferred to the fund from the education in two thousand eighteen general fund. It also directs the monies from the capital projects, transportation, and bus replacement funds to be directed to this account. For clarification for everybody who may be reading on the Sentinel or for our TC four, this is something the state has told us we have to do. We have five funds right now and they're gonna be consolidated into three, and this is something we have to do to get in line with that.
That is correct. And we've been, uh, talking about this, uh, since, I don't know, it's probably sixteen or eighteen months. We've been getting ready, preparing for this.
I understand. There'll be somebody who just starts watching our TC four and just starts reading the big thing and be like, what happened?
Yeah. It's the largest change in school funds and, um, how we operate in the past, was it seventy-two years then? The first, I think it's the largest, the first change and the largest change we've had in seventy-two years in regards to school finance and how that's run.
Is there a motion to establish the education and operations fund for January first, two thousand nineteen? Some motion made by Tom?
I second that.
Second by Steve. All in favor of approving the, the resolution to establish the education and operations fund on January first, two thousand nineteen, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up is a resolution to transfer funds to the education fund and the operations fund effective January first, two thousand nineteen. But this just sounds convoluted enough to be a state program. Be resolved out of the House Enrolled Act in Act one thousand nine. Our CSC board and trustees will allow the transfer of funds from the education fund to the operations fund on a monthly, monthly and semi-annual basis. For those accounts that have been transferred, the operations fund from the education fund, transfers will be made monthly. This would include, but not limited to, the business office and superintendent's line items, including salaries, benefits, insurance, et cetera, and all other operational expenses allowed by law. Due to the fact that revenues flow to the corporation both monthly with state tuition aid and semi-annually through tax draws, these will be transferred following those schedules as deemed necessary by the board. Any questions for Mrs. Vance on that as well? In that cases, there are a motion to approve the resolution to transfer funds from the education fund to the operations fund effective January first, two thousand nineteen. Motion made by Stacy?
Second.
Second by Rick. All in favor of approving the resolution to transfer funds to the education fund, the operations fund effective January first, two thousand nineteen, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries seven to zero. And last on the financial report, a resolution to close the two thousand eighteen year end. This resolution will be adopted, is adopted by the Board of Trustees Rochester Community Schools. Necessary transfers will need to be made from one major budget, budget classification to other major budget, budget classifications in the general fund. The capital projects fund and/or transportation operating fund prior to the two thousand eighteen year end closing. The School Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the treasurer to make all necessary transfers prior to closing the two thousand eighteen accounting year. The School Board of Trustees further directs the treasurer to submit a report designating the actual transfers upon the final close of the two thousand eighteen accounting year. Any question for Mrs. Vance on the resolution to close the two thousand eighteen year end?
And then typically in years past, once we have closed out all of those line items, um, then we bring that back to the board the first meeting in January and are very transparent about the transcript of those funds. So we'll be prepared to do that that first meeting in January, to fulfill the last sentence there in that resolution.
Any questions for Mrs. Vance? That cases our motion to approve the resolution to close the two thousand eighteen year end, uh, year end. Motion made by Sandy? Second by Stacy? All in favor of approving the close to the two thousand eighteen year end, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries seven to zero. If there are no objections, and we'll go through each one, but if there are no objections or consent items, do you see anyone having an objection to combining all those under one vote? Any objection whatsoever? For certification of October fifteenth, two thousand eighteen executive meeting, any additions, deletions, or critiques, comments? For the minutes of the October fifteenth, two thousand eighteen regular board meeting, any additions, deletions, critiques? For certification of November eighth, two thousand eighteen executive meeting, any addition, deletion, or critiques? For the minutes of the November eighth, two thousand eighteen special board meeting, any additions, deletions, or critiques? And for the minutes of the November eighth, two thousand eighteen study session, any additions, deletions, or critiques? In that case, is there a motion to approve all five consent items under letter C? So moved by Sandy, I think.
Yeah.
You okay?
Yes.
I know, I'm there with you. Second. Second by Tom. All in favor of approving? All in favor of approving the consent items, uh, letter C, items one through five, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries seven to zero.
I would like to point out, if I could.
You may.
That for those that think we decide everything here, um, this night, that was five meetings.
And we try to be efficient in our use of resources and time. And that's, I will put out a, another call to come to study sessions. That's where we do a lot of our homework. We obviously, and then it's a public meeting as well. The only one we can't do is the executive session, but I encourage any constituent person that's interested in the school corporation or has concerns, please come to the study session at public board meetings. We will listen to you. Donations? You save all these up for?
Oh, this is so generous of you.
I, I know. That's why I will never complain. Traditionally, or actually historically, we have been very fortunate to get a lot of donations from the community and it certainly helps us as a school district. Uh, donations up for approval are Gon Egg, a hundred dollars for FFA. Dick's Septic, a hundred dollars for FFA. Gon Egg Field Day, two hundred dollars for FFA. Tide Water Salvation Army Supply Packs for RMS student use. First Baptist Church Fellowship Guild, thirty dollars and seventy-one cents for backpack program food. Kroger, a hundred forty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents for Rochester Community School Corporation. Excuse me. Kroger, six cases of water for Riddle Movie Night. Adams Rimco, a thousand dollars for Rochester Community School Corporation. Walmart, fifty dollars for RMS Life Skills Class for coffee cart supplies. Big R Halloween Decorations for teachers at Riddle. Big R, five hundred dollars worth of Halloween decoration supplies for Columbia. RMS PBIS color room. These all contributed to the color room. Rochester Four, two hundred and fifty dollars. Advanced Magnetics, two hundred and fifty dollars. Rochester Glass, two hundred and fifty dollars. B McColl Fed, two hundred and fifty dollars. Rochester Boat Company, five hundred dollars. Frohn Feltzer Dental, five hundred dollars. R E M C, five hundred dollars. Dick's Drive-In, a hundred and fifty dollars. Man, Mr., how'd you work this one, didn't? For you. Dick's Drive-In, a hundred and fifty. Murphy Electric, two hundred and fifty dollars. M and M Irrigation, two hundred and fifty dollars. Jim and Judy Shally, fifty dollars. Rosemary Bailey, a hundred dollars. Brendan Troyer, twenty dollars. New Holland of Rochester, two hundred and fifty dollars. Rochester rotational molding, five hundred dollars. Core Mechanical Service, five hundred dollars. Wilson Fertilizer Grain, five hundred dollars. And then information added on the sixteenth at three thirty for the RMS PBIS color room. Mike Anderson Chrysler Dodge and Jeep, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. I will certainly thank everyone else, but I assume you'd like to say something about item twelve of all the people you had to donate?
Yeah.
And can you, oh, can you, I never, anything else I should add?
But Mike Anderson is not.
Ours.
Yeah, it's ours. It's, it's to the RMS football program.
So, three hundred and seventy dollars to the RMS football program. Correction there. Did you want to add anything, Mr. Hawes, about all those people? Feel free.
Yeah, I truly appreciate the community's support. That is, um, year, that's a two-year donation. Um, they get a banner, but we hang up in the gym for basketball games and volleyball games for the year. And they also sponsor that color station for two years. So we have another group that donated last year as well. So we've got kind of a rotation going there. Um, it's an awesome thing our community supports. It takes just over six to eight thousand dollars a year to run our PBIS program. And so those donations and the color run truly support what we can do to send three to four thousand positive notes home every year, so we appreciate.
Please explain what PBIS is.
Uh, it's positive behavior, reward the positive instead of focusing on the negative. Um, so a kid goes above and beyond, they get a letter. We also have zebra cash in the building, um, that we use for some of the smaller wowls. And then we have our PBIS, uh, room that kids can go to and have pizza parties and, uh, do different things when they get so many letters. So it's a, it's been a great benefit to our building. It's really helped, um, encourage and decrease some of our, uh, negative consequences, which is the ultimate goal of that program. So we appreciate the community's support.
I'm gonna follow that up with for items one through eleven. It never goes unnoticed from the community's support just how much they do for our corporation. So I, on behalf of the board, can't say thank you, not to the community for the things they do for all our students. So for all those who donated, thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the donations as given?
Mr. Weaver.
I'm sorry.
We got a late, um, addition to that.
Okay.
We received a check from the Northern Indiana Community Foundation today for the backpack and food pantry programs for five hundred dollars. Appreciate the board also included that.
A five hundred dollar donation from the Northern Indiana Community Foundation for the?
Backpack and food pantry programs.
Backpack and food pantry programs. Thank you and I see that for that as well. In that case, any more questions or any additions to the donation part of the meeting? Is there a motion to approve donations as given? Motion made by Sandy? I'll give it to her, but you got my good ear still there. Jenny seconded the motion. All in favor of approving the donations as given with addition by Candy and Todd, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries seven to zero. Overnight field trip, FFA Winter Chapter Retreat, and FFA Center Service Project.
Chris, do you mind speaking to that, please?
Yeah, the FFA takes a trip, uh, to this winter retreat to Trafalgar, Indiana. And, uh, it's an experience for the kids. Uh, we go up to seventy-eight and eight in the mornings, about two and a half, three hour trip down there. Uh, where they'll do some community service work for them, maybe rake leaves or like one year and they'll, I, I have my, my own kids involved with that. They build some benches one year, just things like that. Uh, they'll also have a, I believe, a, kind of a Christmas party that night, uh, white elephant exchange. They'll invite the state officers to, uh, be involved and participate with them in that. Uh, state officers that are there, maybe that's part of the responsibility. They spend some time there at Trafalgar, uh, kind of running the camp. And so, uh, neat experience for our kids.
Any questions for Mr. Kezman? In that case, is there a motion to approve the FFA Winter Chapter Retreat and FFA Center Service Project? Motion made by Tom? Second by Stacy. All in favor of approving the motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries seven to zero. Faculty and staff focus, a personnel report. Hiring. Jack Lempel Polsky, current teacher covering Jessica Melton's maternity position to cover the other half of Jess, Jessica's day as a sub when she returns. Reassignment Lauren Atkinson, RMS Language Arts to Rochester High School interim assistant principal. Maternity leave Jessica Melton half days during the second semester, which would be January second, two thousand nineteen. Athletic coaching resignations Lori Atkinson, sixth grade Bad Girls Basketball Coach, Annalee Henderleider, sixth grade Girls Basketball Coach. Added on Friday, three P M resignation, DeWanna Schrader, Columbia Special Needs Preschool Instructional Assistant. Anything else to add to that? Any questions of Mrs. Vance about the personnel report? In that case, is there a motion to? What?
Cause you reminded me to introduce, and I said after you go.
Okay, I, I, I got the, yeah. We probably have proven first.
Shouldn't it be on the hiring, though, that she were doing the interim as assistant, and we, we sent her resignation, like, too? Or reas, oh, sorry, reassign it, sorry.
I'm assuming. Not going to assume. Is there a motion to approve the personnel report as given? Motion made by Rick? Second by Steve. All in favor of approving the personnel report as given, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries seven to zero.
So Chris, if you wouldn't mind sharing just a little bit about the experience?
Yeah, it's really nice to welcome aboard, uh, Mrs. Lori Atkinson. Uh, she's the assistant principal at the high school. So if you would stand up and just kind of make sure everybody gets a chance to see you. So, uh, I, of course, very happy to have her aboard. Uh, she comes to us from the middle school where, uh, her family's, well, Jessie's been here for, uh, he's grown up here basically in one school here, and she's been teaching in the corporation since two thousand three. Uh, knows the school corporation extremely well. Um, she's also had some experiences in leadership roles at the middle school. She worked as, uh, the, uh, curriculum, or CIA coach, uh, curriculum and instruction and assessment, where she was a liaison between the administration and teachers. So she's had some experiences there. She also worked with the Columbia Reading Program, where she set up the curriculum and hired teachers for that. Uh, and she's had, served in, I know, uh, many roles as a supervisor for athletic events up to middle school. And I might add, her first day on the job here, she handled a few situations like an old pro. So, uh, uh, very confident after the first day here, and I know she's got a lot of questions and, uh, will continue to have those. But, uh, boy, am I so excited to have her on board and, uh, with me now. So, uh, and I might add, her being a female is kind of a, an added advantage here. I don't, I no longer have to seek out another female to, to go to restaurants maybe to check things out, locker rooms and things like that. So we kind of got back to that too, so, so I'm very glad to have her.
I'm sure Jessie was role model. I'm sure Cheryl, how many years did you teach?
Um, here, one year less than she did.
Take that from Jessie and give it to Cheryl and acknowledge her.
Lori, anything you'd like to share or say?
Uh, just, it's, it's, it's just an honor to serve now in this capacity. I've been, like you said, teaching in the corporation sixteen years. I've been able to work under some really great principals who've allowed me opportunity to grow and to learn. And then to step into this role is just a great honor. So thank you very much for your support.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Third reading, I'm sorry, on the section F information and analysis, the third reading of various Neola policies.
So these, again, like you said, are third readings, so we've already talked about them at two separate evening meetings. We've also talked about them at study sessions. They have been available on the website as well. With the feedback that we had on fifty-five forty, which at our last evening meeting, we decided to talk about more in the study session. And after that, um, and consulting with administration, we have decided to go ahead with the, um, language as written by Neola. And that having one of our, um, personnel involved with our students if a, um, interview happens with our students and DCS or, um, law enforcement. So for the third reading, this means that after we've read them, should they be approved, then these will become the policies of the corporation. That is policy twenty-two seventy-one, twenty-four twenty-one, sixty-one fifty-two, fifty-four sixty, fifty-five forty, sixty-one eleven, eighty-five ten, and eighty-six oh six.
Any questions about the third reading of various Neola policies? In that case, is there a motion to approve the third reading of the various Neola policies? Some of, motion made by Steve?
Second.
Second by Sandy. All in favor of approving the third reading of the various Neola policies, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries seven to zero. Baseball press box bid update.
Terry Fortsberry from Brilliant is here to walk us through where we are with that and answer any questions that we might have.
Thank you, Jane. I appreciate it. Um, so I gave everyone a handout that looked like this. There's two sheets to this. One is, uh, the original bid information. The second page is updated bid information. The first original bid, um, was back in October. And if you look at that, you'll see we received three bids, the lowest being from Pride, Pride Market at Bunsee for four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. We knew that bid was over our estimated cost estimate and over our budget. So, uh, I had to talk to the contractors and this was, uh, strictly a winter construction project to start immediately and try to get finished before baseball started. And in speaking with them, they recommended that we look at rebidding it as a summer project option to see how much cost we could get out of it. During that time, we also talked to the local health department about some changes to the design, that they wanted to see an additional sink in the, in the building. Um, so main purpose of the project is to replace the existing press box with, which has numerous issues, um, including some structural issues, water damage issues, and has no ADA accessibility. So new project is to replace that. We rebid it, um, just recently. So we got bids last week and that second page outlines those bids, lowest bidder being Miller Construction out of Claypool. At, um, four hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and fifty. So we got the bid down roughly twelve thousand dollars in base bid. But we put in that summer schedule option and they had a deduct of over sixty-one thousand for that summer work. So that got us down to three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. Still a little bit over our budget, an estimate, but talking to contractors and actually talking to, directly to the concrete, uh, vendors, that concrete and masonry are both high right now. Uh, more expensive than we've seen in quite a while. more expensive than we've seen in quite a while. So, it's just the market, there's not much we can do to continue to try to get costs out of this, and still make it accessible, and still make it, you know, what it needs to be. This includes the press box building as well as new backstop fencing from dugout to dugout. All that's being taken out and it's being redone because new press box, we want to make sure we protect it with the, with the backstop. And a lot of that old fencing is rusted and in pretty rough shape, that's in that area anyway, so.
There has been some concerns, I'll leave it at that in the community, about the weight room, and we'll address those as well. But to put this out there, sir, if I could hear exactly what it is, this, the baseball press box was actually pretty much, was it condemned or not?
Needs to be.
Needs to be.
Not officially, but it's, has considerable structural issues and has considerable water damage on the inside.
And what we've done is, we looked at a bid for October, you went back and had a rebid, and with the base bid being 12,000 lower, some deduct for performance and bond stuff, and deduct for summer work schedule moving it back to March, you've actually reduced that price to 369,000.
Correct, which is about $72,000 from the original bid back last month.
Just to make sure, because it seems like we talk and talk and talk about these things, and then when they finally happen, we don't remember that.
We saw a good result, the only thing it does is it pushes our construction schedule to start in May, as soon as baseball ends, and then, and get over as soon as finished, as soon as they can, and no later than November 1st.
So the baseball press box will be done by November 1st of next year?
Correct.
Any questions for Terry about the, yes ma'am?
What exactly is in the press box?
In the press box? Restrooms, both male and female restrooms, which will now will be ADA accessible with an ADA sidewalk from straight up to it. It will include a concession area that will have both a hand wash sink and sink for cleaning and washing up, which it does not have now. And then the upper area will be the press box area for observation and scorekeeping. As I said, also the fence, and I forgot, actually putting concrete under the bleachers. You don't have concrete under your bleachers now, so getting those on concrete, so they'll be easier to clean, maintain, and not sink into the ground.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Thornsbury? All in that note, Terry, and I want to do this publicly because there were, I'll say, concerns or, not necessarily concerns, but questions about the weight room.
Sure.
Some things about the weight room, perhaps we may have marketed it the wrong way as far as calling it a weight room. We're looking at it educationally from the gym classes as well. It's not a football team program, it's not anything like that. It's for the whole school educationally because we have, I believe, Mr. Keesling, every hour of every day, there's a weight room class, correct?
We're also, we're looking at a possible zero hour, would be before school, as part of the curriculum that we look for.
Right, and folks, jump in here correctly because you're the experts, right now, the weight room we have is 1,700 square feet, correct?
Correct.
We looked at trying to redo classrooms in the school and do a remodel rather than doing a whole new weight room building, and I think that was right around 900,000, 800,000, and it didn't meet what we needed, correct?
And if we could back up just a moment about the educational part of it too, when you talk about the academic part, every student at the high school is required to either take a PE class or a health class, and if they don't fulfill that requirement, they are gaining those credits through athletics. So this is a facility that every student within the high school is going to have to use in one manner or another to receive the credit for graduation.
I think it's important to add too, with the new grad, graduation pathways, varsity athletics is included as a possible option for a service learning project that is a year-long program that would need to include the weight room in its use towards that goal.
And this isn't just a football weight room or wrestling room, this is swimming, basketball, any athletic program for the high school and even middle school if they so deem, correct?
Yes. And I think to, to update on that too, I think sometimes people remember how athletics were when they were in school, and I don't consider myself really old, but, but even when I was in school, everybody didn't lift. If you are in a sport now, you lift. And I appreciate the safety measures that this brings in. By having everybody in the team together in one facility, then the person who's leading it can watch form, they can watch how people are using the equipment and doing the exercises. Also, as a swim mom, I threw the winter for the last four years, my son gets up, he goes in, works out in the morning, four days a week, four practices after school too. And because of where the weight room is located now, they have to have someone stand to let them in, okay? So picture, it's February and it's really, really cold, and there's somebody can stand there for only so long before they need to go and be back with the team. And so, let's say your car breaks down, or your parents sleeps in a little bit too long or whatever, and you are three minutes late, now there's no way for you to get in, and we, we've had issues with the gates being stuck, that kind of thing. This will be a freestanding facility with its own restrooms, it is designed to serve our kids and our community.
Well, and there's several points that you need to add. Safety insurance was becoming problematic with the current space and equipment. We are self-insured, opening up this facility for staff and faculty, we'll be a cost savings to the district, and I wrote these down, so, because I didn't want to forget, this is important, people have questions, they deserve answers. But opening this up for the faculty and staff, hopefully a cost saving to the district on self-insurance. Storage was becoming an issue, we know that, go ahead.
And, and I think that that was, as, as we were talking about concerns in regards to the weight room and academics and injuries and the state of the equipment and what we were seeing, we were also working with Brad Carter on capital projects and how to reduce costs to the district, realized that if we order in bulk and were able to store that in the climate controlled area, we could save on, in our capital projects with chemicals, with paper, with those types of things. So with that, the admin, part of the administrative team, Greg Lawrence, Terry and I walked the building for half a day, and we did come up with other design plans, but in the end, Terry, they ran about 800,000 and we still weren't getting what we needed.
Correct, and you were taking your round, taking away valuable classroom space in order to change it into a condition space.
Exactly.
Are we maxing out the classroom space at the high school, Mr. Keesling?
You rolled ours.
That's a rhetorical answer. And then, let's be honest, we also think of, that's our front porch, so we do that to get students to want to come here and use these facilities, and these, they see these things. It's, it's like, and I'm going to go basic finance one on, so jumping incorrectly, I always used to think it's paying off your school debt, it's like paying off your house payment, after 20, 10, 20, 30 years, you paid it off, you own the house. Having schools that were built in 1965, we as a board try to keep things consistent, and we need to update things as we can. Of course, you have to do your meat and potatoes, your roofs, your HVAC, your classrooms, but these are some things with the current bond issue we could do to add to our students' educational needs as well. And so, it's like me, I can't afford to go buy a new house like Terry probably can, but I can afford to remodel certain rooms at one time. So that, that's the point behind the whole, I want to say athletic facility, it's, it's that. Terry, is there anything you'd like to add to that that I missed or should have added to?
Sure, other things that this building helps resolve, we have currently two utility sheds on site out there, which are not an eyesore, but they're not, you know, the best thing, they're literally temporary, and they're sitting on just wood slats on the concrete. Those are going to be moved and relocated for use elsewhere. But we're also going to take down an old building that is maintenance issue, it's considered mom's building, but it's mostly empty. We've created a new space in the new building that will accommodate a vending space for multiple things for fundraising. We also have now restaurants, as you mentioned, not only for the building use, but during track and football and anything else that happens out there, those will be accessible for the public from the outside. So that building will have multiple, multiple uses, not just for students alone. And it's a building that we designed that's going to be there for 50, 60, 70 years, easy without a lot of maintenance and a lot of upkeep and other things, so it'll, it'll definitely help pay for itself.
And two more things I want to add, we, we talked about this extensively as part of several study sessions, several public board meetings, we talked about things with bond financing, so to say it wasn't out there, it was out there, and we do hold study sessions, we try to hold one every quarter in the evening as well, or at least we have, so people that have the work can come to those in the evening. And we never heard any word of objection to it then. And I will also remind that there was 7-0 support on the vote for the athletic facility weight room for that. So, hopefully that answers some of the questions in the community. I realize when you see that figure, it's one of those that jumps right out at you, but it's also not 1970 anymore, and we built this school, again, like I said, four years before we put a man on the move, so let's keep that in consideration as well. Yes, sir, please do.
So, one question that might come up, and I'll get some legal advice on it, so, as removing these funds, people say, oh, you got $1.4 million in the athletic facility, you got $400,000 in the press box, wouldn't it be great if we took some of that money and we hired another teacher? But is it true that we can't take a penny of money from capital projects to pay salaries?
That's accurate. The, the state is very restrictive and has become even more so in the last 12 years, I guess it's been, since, you may not remember that the state raised your sales tax two cents to reduce property taxes because they moved some, some dollars, which are now the instructional dollars, as a reimbursement from the state. The money we get from the state goes to pay teachers and for classroom items, and they're not going to let us adjust that. There's only one way we can use local property tax dollars to improve the pay for teachers or for administrators, and that would be through a public referendum, call it an operating, an operations referendum, where we invite the, the people of the school district to approve adding so many cents on the dollar for property taxes to go to educational, the educational cost of instruction. Cannot do it with capital projects money, cannot do it with bond money, cannot do it with transportation funds or any of those funds that are now being merged into operations versus instruction.
So the bond money we have, it was from local property tax, and it is, is locked into just building a building, or repairing a building, or a new boiler, or HVAC, it's locked into those categories, it can't go anywhere else.
Catalysts and operating referendum, which this is not.
Right. The money we have now is locked into construction.
But a referendum raises taxes. And if, what are we doing with the bonds?
Didn't raise taxes.
Okay, I'm clear. Your phone.
No, I just wanted to make a point that we are not raising any of those taxes to do these things, so.
Any other comments by the board? In that case, Ms. Vance, I didn't do the detail, did you want, or is it on the agenda to vote on the baseball?
So we would, I would recommend that we go with Miller Construction, but take the Auburn and U-Duck, the A2 to begin, do that summer work, saving us, saving us $61,150, which within the scope of bonds is going to allow us to do other projects that are important to us as well. But this would at least lock us in, but I think Terry and I are finding, the longer we go, the more these construction companies are picking up other jobs, and so each time we've bidded out, we're going to see those go up because they're going to be locked into other contracts as well. This will at least reserve that for us, and we'll know when the project is and the exact amount that we need to budget for.
I'm going to allow for public comment on the baseball press box bid, if there is. If there is anybody that'd like to speak to it, please keep your comments, two minutes, please stand up, and please say your name for the camera and the newspaper. Mr. McGloughlin?
Fred McGloughlin Jr., I, I do have a question. I would like to know, you, your statement acts like the front porch of our, the weight room would be the front porch of our facility. What's, what's the press box down there? It's at the main gate, and it is an eyesore. You know, these kids went one year without the press box, and now we're going to go another year without the press box. The scoreboard worked half, halfway last year, you know, it, the whole, the whole process down there, I don't get why we can put the weight room in front of a condemned building, so he wants to condemn it. How, how can we do that? How is it safe if we are going to condemn it for them to be down there around it? It just, it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense, you know? If it's $60,000 more to build the press box, what's the cost to build the weight room in the winter? It's significantly bigger, so the cost is going to be way more. You know, what is it, 200, 300,000 dollars? I guess it just doesn't make much sense to me that we kind of are doing the projects backwards, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. McGloughlin. Anyone else? Any questions of Mr. Rick, Mrs. Vance, or Mr. Thornsbury about the press box bid? In that case, your recommendation is Miller Construction with the total bid of 369,000, right? Is there a motion to approve the bid for the baseball press box as given?
Sure.
Motion made by Sandy?
Sandy?
Second by Tom. All in favor of approving the baseball press box bid update, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries seven to zero. approvals of auction of projectors and monitors.
Sure, we have this, this is last semester, we have updated our projectors that we've had for about seven, eight years, and going out and, and being dim and writing this and everything, so we updated a lot of our projectors, which was about 100 projectors that we had replaced. We had monitors that was, that we took out last summer to, that reduced a few labs and everything that we had in, at schools. So these are just leftovers that we could put on the auction to auction off for anybody that'd like to buy them.
Any questions of Mr. Kissler or Mrs. Vance on that?
No, I'd just like to make a comment that I've heard great things, that the new ones are working great and they can see them, so your team did a great job.
Even with the new LEDs, as bright as it is, they can still see the projector. Any other questions or comments for Mrs. Vance or Mr. Kissler? Is there a motion to approve the auction of projectors and monitors? Some of, motion made by Steve, is there a second? Second by Rick, is that correct? Sorry, your sauce cooking. All in favor of approving, they wouldn't say it on the center, no worries. All in favor of approving the auction of projectors and monitors, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries seven to zero.
And we'll put that, for those interested in bidding on those, we'll put it on our website here in the next few days, so that people have the opportunity to go to that link and bid on those.
Change in bereavement wording in both the certified and classifieds.
So, I would like to begin by thinking those, sometimes you have things that are inherently concerning, but until they're brought to your attention, you don't realize the impact that that's having on families and, and especially in the time of mourning. And what we found in our current reading, our current wording of our bereavement policy, it reads as following. For bereavement, each teacher, in this language, transfers over then to classified staff as well, will be entitled to be absent following a death in the immediate family without loss of pay for a period extending that more than five school days beyond such death. The immediate family for such purposes shall include the husband, wife, child, parent, brother, sister, or any other person living in the employee's home as part of the family. And what we had happen in the last two and a half or three weeks is we've had stepparents pass away who were very, very important, and for the language, we found that restrictive, and then when auditors come in, it just perpetuates a cycle. So I am respectfully asking the board that we change the language and that to include everything, to include those relatives that would be stephusband, stepwife, stepchild, and also we respectfully ask that we go back and honor those days that were missed for those two employees, which happened in the last two and a half or three weeks who were on hourly salary and missed work because of a wording concern that we were really unaware of until they brought to my attention, and I'm thankful that they did, so we have the opportunity to make a right.
Any questions for Mrs. Vance on that?
Just would have a comment that, of course, this is a way that we take care of our employees, but maybe kind of a hidden way, and that perhaps it's important to share that with our employees, that we have a very generous bereavement lead, and, and as it should be, but it is a benefit that should be acknowledged.
Any other comments from Mrs. Vance? In that case, is there a motion to change the bereavement wording in both the certified and classified handbooks?
And also if we could give that back to the...
And we can also retroactively approve that for the two instances where it affected our employees. Motion's made by Rick. Second by Stacy, all in favor?
Ask for clarification.
Certainly.
Does the motion say for the two employees? Because if we say retroactive, somebody could go back two years.
Yeah, it was just in the la, the two that brought it to our attention, and was within the last two and a half, oh yeah, well Luke's not here, he's at a conference, that it would happen within the last two weeks, two and a half weeks.
That's right, just a lot of the specifics.
Rick, I assume your motion still stands?
Yes, sir.
So the motion was made by Rick and Stacy, I assume you still second? Okay, change of bereavement wording in both the certified and classified handbooks with the last two instances that Mrs. Vance is alluding to. All in favor of approving the motion, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries seven to zero. Superintendent's business. Superintendent's business.
Just received a really thoughtful note from retired state representative Bill Friend. It was a handwritten letter that I'd like to share with everybody. This is, Dear Diana, just a note to express how pleased and impressed I was with the Veterans Day program at RHS. Not only a patriotic observance, but the students were so well behaved and respectful. Congratulations to you on several fronts. And then also on this share, we have really neat programs going on across the district in regards to Veterans Day. So, thank you, a sincere thank you to those who have served, and I know that there are a couple in the room right now, but also acknowledging that on the administrative team and keeping that at the level, including Rick Faust, who helped lead that at the high school. So just want to thank everybody for that. Working through the budget, a tremendous administrative team and spending time with Tom, and then really looking line by line at what we're doing and how to save money. Kyle came in and I'm sort of part of that today. I don't know if you want to comment or if it was the steep learning curve, but just want to thank the team for helping us through that, and everybody has a great holiday, holiday weekend.
Echo the thanks to our veterans, can never be said enough. Thank you from the bottom of all of our hearts and especially my family for letting us be and do what we do. Also, Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. I hope you enjoy it as much as I plan to. And is there any other business for, I'm sorry, is there any public comment, as we always do? Is there any public comment that anyone would like to make before we adjourn the meeting? There is no public comment, is there any further business for the board to discuss?
I have a question, Brad. Going back to the tag grant monies, so, we just made, recently made a change in who is involved in the collective bargaining agreement. In the past, would everyone that was involved in the collective bargaining agreement be available to have those tag grant funds, or was it only certified teachers?
It was only, I think, about two. So, two, it was only, they were part of the bargaining unit, so they would have been eligible and are still eligible under the qualifications that the state puts on, except now we have new that have come in through the, through outside agents. They would not be eligible, yes, but they will receive.
But our, our employees, if they were...
Correct, if they were here last year and will be here this year, obviously we need to honor that.
So now that they're not part of the CBA for the following year, will that be something that we would need to add?
That we'd have to address.
But that would be the next year?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, I'm just terrified now.
Any other business for the board to discuss? In that case, we'll consider the meeting adjourned. Happy Thanksgiving.